So there are no changes to this as it was recommended by planning or as you looked at it on first reading. And I believe that's all I have.
Any questions for Kevin?
Any discussion before a public hearing? Okay, then we will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
I'll move we approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion passes. Our next public hearing is a consideration of an ordinance to amend ordinance 19-27 adopting the 2019-2020 fiscal year budget. This is a second reading.
Mayor and council, these are the 2020 fiscal year end budget amendments. The general fund and capital projects fund have some line items that need to be appropriated. These amendments are offset by current year revenues and fund balance. And there's been no changes from the first reading.
Any questions for Rex on this? Okay, then I will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, go to the council for a motion.
Move to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion passes. We have a couple items under new business. Our first is our planning commission report. It is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the amendment of the existing Sterling at Stonecrest PUD located on tax map 33 parcel 1.04 containing approximately 6.09 acres. It's requested by Traditions of Smyrna LLC. The property is located at 700 Great Circle and this is a first reading. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a, is an amendment to the existing approved PUD at the Sterling of Stonecrest. This would only affect one parcel of that. There's about seven, I believe, total out there. This is going to be the one tract of land that would be affected by this. Surrounding zoning is a mix of C2 and the rest of this PUDs. This approved PUD allows for a mix of apartments, senior living, medical offices, and retail. The approved PUD does allow for assisted living on the parcel as where it's shown. What was approved was a second building, very similar in scope and size to what was already approved and built as the existing two-story building. Now, this amendment would change that second building. Become a four-story independent living building instead of an assisted living facility. It would have 68 units within it, 54 one-bedroom and 14 two-bedrooms. Each unit would have a full kitchen as well as a living area. The proposed building does have internal corridors with elevators and has an exterior mix of brick and concrete siding, so it's very much in keeping with the approved PUD with what's been built out there at this point from an external architectural standpoint. We did review this quite a bit at the planning commission the other night. The planning commission did recommend approval with several conditions. One, that the building is required to comply with the Housing for Older Persons Act, which essentially requires it to be a 55-foot building for the most part. The development will be required to meet all aspects of the adopted power code with regard to access for the necessary apparatus, which could result in changes to the drive layout and locations of parking. This will be looked at in more detail at the site plan. There were some concerns with regards to the ability for the fire department to get it completely around the building, but they did commit that they would comply with all those requirements that we would have. The, and the last one, there is some additional parking is required as discussed at the planning commission meeting with at least four additional spaces. They had originally looked at this and calculated it as if it was an assisted living facility, and this is more of a facility where there's a more, certainly more of a chance that there would be people that live in this building will have vehicles. And so we wanted to treat it as if it were a senior apartment facility. And so that was a requirement that they have come back. I did receive just this afternoon an email from the engineer on the project. He believes he can add at least eight more spaces. So I feel very good about the parking that was shown when the site plan comes into us if you all choose to approve it. There will be adequate parking on this site. We're going to have two different buildings. There are going to be shared management side and the staffing will be working with both buildings. And so parking can certainly work for the whole site as well. So I believe we are in good order with that issue as well. So again, the planning commission did review this and did recommend it to you unanimously.
Questions for Kevin?
Do we have other independent living type facilities like what their design is there?
I don't know if we have anything exactly like this because this is more than just a senior apartment building and because there are, there is going to be within your packet of information there, they had the floor plan and on that first floor, there is a community dining area. It's my understanding is part of living here, one meal a day will be provided as part of the...
It's closer to Adam's place, isn't it?
It's a little bit closer to something like that, yeah. I really don't think we have anything like this. We have completely independent living with nothing like that being provided, or we have more of the assisted living or nursing home setup. I don't think we really have something exactly like this.
How many units was in the fire plan?
I don't, they didn't really have units because it was set up by more of as an assisted living facility. There's 99 beds in the existing building. This one was, it was smaller. It was still a two-story building. It was smaller than what is already built, so it was probably somewhat less than 99, but I don't know exactly the numbers.
To be honest, I think we know that they build a quality product. We've seen what they've done with Traditions and with the apartments there. And again, we talk about wanting to provide opportunities for diversity in our community, and I think this does that. I think it allows individuals who want to downsize and may need a little bit of help but don't need full help. And so I think it gives other people opportunities to live in our community that we might not have been able to provide them that housing opportunity.
Have they talked about the commercial areas of this development? Any discussion on that yet?
I've not had anything. Any discussions with them on that? No.
You know, one of the things too, Mayor, that you mentioned about independent living versus assisted living is, we even discussed this during our meeting the other night, how we have a lot of people in assisted living now whose family would like to be close by to take care of them and they meet that standard of, you know, the age category and sometimes they're single, sometimes they're not. And it just really blends well. They do share their employees and we noticed there's not a huge commercial kitchen inside of this one as there is probably the other one. So parking, we discussed this at length the other night, planning commission, that was one of everyone's concerns. I think they've addressed that with the eight additional spots. So that's, knowing that, what Kevin shared tonight, just makes me feel that much better about it.
Agree. Other comments? Okay, then do I have a motion?
A move to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion passes. Our next item is consideration of an ordinance relative to the amendment of the existing PRD and the rezoning of property located on tax map 54 parcels 51.00 and part of parcel 50.01 containing approximately 15.4 acres. It's requested by Andre Jaquil. It is to amend the existing PRD 14.2 acres and rezone from PRD to R3 1.2 acres. The properties are located at 8162 and 8286 Rocky Fork Amble Road, and this is a first reading. Kevin?
And Mayor and council, this is a couple of different things. One request, part of this request is to amend the existing approved PRD for the Stewart School and Development. And then the amendment, or the, part of it that's not the amendment is just to rezone about 1.2 acres of the original approved PRD back to R3, which is what it was zoned previously. The approved PRD is for 20 single-family lots and 32 townhouses on 15.4 acres. So this would reduce, remove 1.2 acres from that PRD, so you would have only 14.2 acres within the PRD. This, the area requested to be removed was approved to be part of the open space for the development. So this would have the effect of increasing the density from 3.4 units per acre to 3.7 units per acre, though they're not changing the number of units at all. The density goes up because the land area goes down. The open space and amenity requirements will still be met with the reduction in open space. The overall layout of the development, number of units, all that, none of that is changing. It's just this removal, this 1.2 acres from the development. The planning commission did review this and did recommend approval, 6-4. No against with one abstention. Basically, again, we're amending the PRD and at the same time, we are rezoning a piece of property from our, from PRD back to R3. And that's what I have.
Questions for Kevin on this?
So the R3 is being returned to an R3?
Yes.
For what purpose?
It's going to be recombined with some of the adjoining parcel and we may see it come back at some point as an R3 development or some back, some part of another PRD or something in the future. But right now, it's going to be just become, be combined back to one of the adjoining parcels and be just nothing happening with it right now, just vacant land.
You know, lessening the green space and bringing up PRD back to us and lessening the green spaces. It doesn't strike me as something that I particularly care for. I mean, we, the density is already in question in my mind there. And I think all the open area that can be allowed to, it should be kept there. What was the planning commission's thoughts on this?
Well, I mean, if you, yeah, I mean, if you look at the one sentence, the open space and then many of the requirements would still be met. So we're still meeting what we've set as standard for the town. So that's part of it. The second part of it is there's a potential there for that R3 to combine with additional R3 and, and, you know, you're going for a less dense, a less dense area. So, you know, the number of units has not gone up. It's remained the same. There's R3 that's adjacent to it that still fits and works with adjacent R3. And the fact that we've set a standard and they, they're still meeting the standard.
So they actually had a lot more percentage in the open space before. And the reduction still is what our requirement is.
Yeah. Yeah, we've gone down 1.2 acres and that's being rezoned to R3, which in and of itself creates, you know, in effect, you've got more, you've still got open space there, but it's, now it's a different, it's not part of it. It's, it's being pulled out and it's now R3.
Same people own that R3 that is adjacent to it?
Completely, I think it was, I think they were part of it.
That's what was cut out before and is a single-family home that's on that R3, correct?
Yes, there's, there's, there actually are three single-family homes existing. There's three parcels there and there's actually three single-family homes existing. I believe that it's the same owner, I believe they, they have sold the PRD portion of this. But yes, it is all part of, it's the same original ownership as far as what you all saw when it was rezoned.
So will it be a joint, enjoined with the R3 that?
It'll be combined, yes. It won't be 1.2 acres by itself with no road funding. It'll have to be combined with one of those other parcels.
Other questions or comments?
Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion?
I'll move we approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? Okay. All in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Put me down as a note, please.
And one abstention. Okay. Moving on to item B is our package liquor board report, and we didn't have any applications for the town council to consider. Item C is consideration of an ordinance to amend the Town of Smyrna Municipal Code Title 8, Alcoholic Beverages, Chapter 3, Retail Sales of Alcoholic Beverages, to allow manufacturing of wine, and this is a first reading. Jeff?
Yes, Mayor and council, as your mayor, the town planner proposed some changes regarding wineries to the zoning ordinance. Well, this is for the municipal code currently as it stands, and these are, is a minor change to the ordinance itself with a larger effect. But as it stands currently, you could not manufacture wine within the jurisdiction of Smyrna. This would just allow wineries to exist here. They are, the oversight of wineries is by the state, just as with liquor by the drink. So it's not like they would come to the beer board or those types of things unless they sold beer. But other than that, it's, for our purposes of the municipal code, is whether we just allow it or not, and that's what we're doing with this amendment.
Questions for Jeff on this?
I've got a question that I should have asked in the previous ordinance change, but what's the difference between a brewery and a microbrewery? And I mean, is there, is there actual specifications for that?
Kevin Arnold, would you like to answer that? There are within state law, there's a certain maximum amount of product you can produce any year. Off the top of my head, I don't remember exactly what those numbers are, but that is, that's where it is. It's in TCA.
So they're regulated in a different manner when they, when they reach brewery rather than microbrewery or microwinery, whatever?
Yes, I would assume that's the case, but I know that is, there are, and I mean, what did you call it, the grape, grape law or something like that, as far as the winery piece of it? You know, there's a whole thing, there's a whole lot of state law that deals with this. How you can sell it and how much you can produce and what you can sell with it in your store, and there's all kinds of stuff.
Okay, I just, like I said, I thought of that after we'd already passed the other one. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion?
We approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion passes. Item D is consideration of resolution to set the dates and times for the 2021 council meetings and work sessions. I think we've all kind of looked over these dates. Any questions or concerns with any of them? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion passes. Item E is other. And I guess we're just going to sit and look at each other for 34 minutes? Yes?
Can we, can we go into a status report?
Well, actually, because it's going to be a different meeting, you could adjourn.
Can we adjourn?
Well, we could do the staff reports and like she was saying.
Right, we'll do all that, but then we can...
And see where we're at and if we need to come back.
Okay. Ms. Diane, anything? Brian?
I have 34 minutes worth that I'd like to share with you.
I'm sorry, motion. That was a joke.
It's okay. Just a couple of things I'd like to share with council and some things I'd like to share tonight, just to kind of bring the community up to speed on some of the programs and some of the things we're doing. I did receive from Beth in our finance department, a really nice note where we recognized the passing of her sister, and then also Paula Stanley in the utilities department. I've got the notes here and thank them for recognizing that. On a somber note, Robert Jacobs at our Smyrna Police Department, his mother passed away. She is being held in McMenville. I'm not sure what the arrangements are yet, but it'll be in McMenville. So keep him and his family in prayer. Chief Bill sent me this and I just wanted to shout out to Chief Arnold and Chief Culberson, both. As most of you know, there was quite a few articles in the paper and stuff around the canine that was killed in Laverne. The funeral procession came through Smyrna and we did a really nice job of recognizing the loss of, of the canine officer in Laverne with our flag and our people were out on the streets and some of our folks participated in the funeral itself. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. Just to give an update on the all-inclusive playground that we've talked about for a little while, things are moving forward. I just want to remind the community that we did receive two really, really good grants that helped us move to the next level of getting this project underway. One, of course, being from the Kristy Houston Foundation for $250,000, and then also the State Farm grant for $25,000 that helped us achieve that final pushover for the playground itself. Now, we do still have a phase two that we'll be doing fundraising with the Rotary Club for the bathrooms and stuff, but I'm happy to report, talking with Mike Moss, they've met with the playground equipment folks. The equipment has been ordered. Should see some activity on that site, probably mid to late January when the equipment comes in, weather permitting. Another thing I want to share with you, we've talked about this a little bit, but the Flock cameras are now installed with the exception of one. Jerry, I won't tell you where it's at because we're waiting to catch you there, but since they've been installed, we've had 737,000 tags that have gone through the system. Because now you've got to understand that they're looking at every tag. We had 614 unique reads, which is just, there was an item of interest about that. We had 154 hits for stolen, missing, or wanted vehicles, and we were able to work on some of those. I don't have the statistics of what we actually closed, but we do know those vehicles passed through our town at some point. And the most hits in one day was on the 11th, no, 6th of December, and we had 11 in one day that came through the system, so.
Can you tell the public what they do and that sort of thing, just so they're aware?
Yeah, basically what happens is, and I don't know the correct terminology, but any time a stolen vehicle is reported, all that information goes into the database. With these Flock cameras, we've strategically placed them in entry levels coming into our community and it reads every tag. So if we have a hit that a stolen tag or something, a warrant for an arrest of someone and that tag is associated with that warrant, as it goes through those Flock cameras, it won't tell us exactly where they're at, but for that moment. But it'll record the vehicle, the tag, and at what time that vehicle went through. So then our police officers can then respond to that area looking for, say it's a black Nissan pickup truck or something with this tag number on it. We know it's in this vicinity and we can send some of our officers to that area, you know, to look. But we feel like it's going to help us a lot. We've seen other communities that have done this that are showing some great responses, but I just thought just the sheer number of the number of hits we're getting, it's going to pay for itself.
Well, and I've been seeing more and more since we put them in that of communities that are talking about wanting to have them in their community. So I think it's just another way that we're able, hopefully, to keep our citizens safe.
Yep.
Hey, Brian, I've got a question. You may not even answer this. Maybe Chief can or may not. As far as, say example would be a carjacking takes place in Smyrna. How quickly could this system potentially pick up that tag if it happened in Smyrna that fast?
As soon as it's reported into the system, chief, is what I understand, that tag then becomes a...
It could be read the day of the, same day?
Absolutely, yes.
Within minutes?
Within minutes, good.
Just, Kerry Brown, what was the timeline? You said since they've been installed, how long have they been installed?
30...
We had five that were sold pretty quickly, then we had four or five that they've had some technical issues with or something in effect.
We had to decide on some of the cameras if they would be done through solar or battery backup, those type things versus being able to hook them directly to the electricity and those kind of things. We had one camera that after we decided where we were going to put it, then some construction altered where that camera could be, those kind of things, so.
What was the timeline, 30 days they've been up? About 30 days?
I'm going to say 45 for the first...
30 to 45.
Yeah, 30 to 45 days.
It's impressive, 158 stolen tags or vehicles in 45 days.
700 and...
Sounds like a big number.
You haven't picked Jerry up yet either.
737,000.
It's the same car, they're just driving in and out.
Jerry.
I noticed he said Black Titan, that's what I drive.
Well, I knew that. I was trying to point that out. Black Titan, a reserve model.
Well, I'm glad to know that we're keeping up with what technology is going on and we're putting those to use for the betterment of our citizens.
And I think it's important for the citizens to hear some of those things. That's why we wanted to bring that forward tonight. You'll see on the screen, the Town of Smyrna wishes each of you a Merry Christmas, but we also want to remind everybody, I know we'll have a council workshop prior to this, but the town hall will be closed on Thursday, December 24th and Friday, December 25th to observe the holiday. But keep in mind that, you know, our fire, police, water treatment, wastewater treatment personnel, they will continue to work. We appreciate so much those, those folks that don't really get to recognize the holidays as much as maybe the rest of the staff does, but they're always willing to serve and be out there taking care of things. So again, we'll be closed on December 24th and December 25th. Next thing I wanted to report to you, Ms. Stevens, our county, or the Smyrna Court Clerk Office, did their clerks for coat drive again this year. They collected over 200 coats. Remember this year because of COVID, they were asking only for new coats, hats, gloves, those type of things. Everybody did a great job. She did ask me, there's a letter she's put together here, I'm not going to read the whole letter, but she'd like to thank the following local Smyrna small businesses for helping collect the coats and raise awareness. Marty Lufman with State Farm Insurance, Tennessee Chiropractic Alliance, Gil's Ace Hardware, as well as the Smyrna Senior Activity Center. And she also said to give a shout out to not only the businesses, but also Mr. Jerry Short, one of our council members, was very helpful with the coat drive this year. So thank you, Jerry, for what you did. The last thing I have for you tonight, this is hot off the press. Mike Moss shared this with me this afternoon about, what, 2:30? But the GNRC, which is the Greater Nashville Regional Council, announced its 2020 Local Governmental Awards for Excellence in Public Service. And I'm happy to announce that Excellence in Economic Development Awards honor for local governments, Town of Smyrna for the Depot District Canopy Project was recognized. And we have a press release that I know Kathy will be working with Mike to get that out. Also, Excellence in Recreation and Youth Engagement, again, Town of Smyrna, Synthetic Ballfields at Cedarstone Community Park was recognized. So those are two really nice awards that we won for the town and appreciate everybody's efforts and every, you know, you think about, and I know a lot of times we look at those projects and they fit around the parks and rec, but a lot of hands touched that from our legal department, through the council's influence, through the budgetary items that we have to work through from time to time, write recs, especially at Cedarstone, to make all those things happen. So there are a lot of people make this happen, so I want to recognize the town as a whole for winning two really nice awards in those categories.
Well, and that's the whole middle Tennessee region that submits.
That's correct. And there's some other folks that won. I didn't recognize some of those other counties, but Smyrna got two nice awards out of it, so. I did my best to fill the 34 minutes up, that's all I've got.
You did pretty good. Jeffrey L?
I have nothing.
Nothing. Okay, Rocky?
Just my condolences to Officer Jacob on the loss of his mother, and I don't know that we'll be back before workshop, will we? I was going to say Merry Christmas to everyone and be safe.
22nd.
Yeah, we're back, so we'll be back.
So I'll have to say it again, and that's it.
HG?
Just as we move closer and closer to Christmas and people are out spending their money, spend your money locally. If you have trouble finding a local business, you can go to SimonTN.org, and that's the Smyrna Independent Merchants Association. And hope that everyone has a safe lead up to the holiday. How's that one? And Mark, just be kind.
Yes, sir.
Tim?
Just again, wanted to thank everybody...
Just again, wanted to thank everybody for re-electing me. I'm going to go ahead and say thank you for Raquel and Steve. I'm excited about serving the council another four years and working with this group up here. We may not always agree, but there's never a disagreement that we're not all passionate for the town. We care about the town, and we're committed to continuing to work hard.
I would agree with that. Jerry?
Okay, Mayor, I know you're going to talk about it a little bit later as far as the food drive, but I just wanted to say thank you to those that have provided either money or food for this. And I really wanted to talk a bit about some of the schools that were around here. Dr. Sutherland at Smyrna High School, Jennifer Clark at Rocky Fork Middle, and Dr. Ferguson at Smyrna Middle School. They got together and did part of the food drive themselves, and I think it was close to 4,700 cans, I think is somewhere where that number was. And so, you know, with COVID going on and the schools not being in and all the kids not all being there, I thought this was an awesome project, and I just want to say thank you to those schools for their help in this. Ms. Appleton, you had a birthday yesterday, so happy belated birthday, and good to see you, good to see you here. The, also want to say congratulations to my daughter-in-law, Shelby Short. She graduated from MTSU with her master's degree just two weeks ago, I guess it was, when they had the graduation. And I actually forgot to say it the last time we met, so I'm trying to catch up, but she's now working on a doctor's degree, so just wanted to say congratulations, and we're certainly proud of her. Also, got a granddaughter who's going to have a birthday next week, Mackenzie, so happy birthday to you as well. And Mayor, that's all I got. Thank you.
MTSU, I thought they did a really good job of figuring out a way to be able to do graduation, and it turned out to be a gorgeous weekend, so.
It was a good weekend.
I know everybody's kind of been struggling with events that are so important in people's lives and for families, and so I thought MTSU stepped up and did a great job.
They really did, did a nice job.
Steve?
Only a couple of things. Again, thank you to the Town of Smyrna for re-electing me to a second term. I'm excited and I look forward to serving four more years, so I appreciate that effort and that support. I want to say happy birthday to my dad. His birthday was Sunday. I'm not going to say how old he is, but some of you up here are old enough to be my dad, so y'all can figure it out. I'm not going to say who, but happy birthday, and if you see him out in town, he hates it when people say happy birthday to him, so by all means, tell him happy birthday. Also, you know, I have to mention this every chance I get, I'm sure that my small group at church gets tired of hearing this prayer request, but please pray for those that are serving. With my son being there, it's a little closer than it usually is, because we hear the challenges and the struggles that they're going through on a daily basis. It's tough for all of us right now in, you know, this COVID situation where we're locked in our houses in some cases, or, you know, separated from our family members. Well, they're separated all the time and can't come home, you know, can't come visit. So just keep them in mind, the suicide rate for military service members right now is at an all-time high. And my son's unit was struck by this recently, and it's just, it's a sad thing that they get to the point where they feel like they're alone, and they don't realize how many of us are still praying for them, are still supporting them. So if you've got somebody that's serving in the service, reach out to them, let them know you're there. You know, nowadays, we don't really write letters, but a text message occasionally, just saying we're thinking of you or something would be very good. My mother-in-law sends Kevin, my son, a text every Sunday, and just tells him that she loves him and that she's praying for him, and if she misses a Sunday, he calls to check on her because he thinks something must be wrong. So it does mean a lot when you show that support, so please continue to do so. That's all.
I don't think any of us get tired of you reminding us of that. I think we all need to be reminded of things like that, so I will continue to do that. Mark?
Well, it's a good lead into one of the things I had on my list tonight, and that was remembering Pearl Harbor Day. That was this week, December 7th is a date I think that is emblazoned in a lot of our minds as we've aged, and so the service of those that day mean just as much as the ones that are serving today. And so we think of them and pray for them. Want to say to Officer Jacobs, sorry about your mother's passing, and also to Pat Hood, my pastor, he lost his dad a couple of weeks ago, and now he is dealing with a COVID infection. So Pat, I don't think he watches, he's in the county somewhere, but let him know that we're thinking of him and his family during all this. And glad to see that Raquel's back on the mend. She's back, and Mayor, you're back, and your family's feeling better, so it's just been a different year, especially it affects everybody. We've had it affect a few people here at the Town Hall, so. That said, we had to cancel our employee luncheon. We've canceled a lot of things this year. It's been a different year. We've not had our parade, we've not had our lunches to recognize all of our employees and their service and the time they've given to the Town of Smyrna, and just in appreciation. So I want to say to all of you, if you're here watching tonight, thank you for what you do. As a town, we just don't function without you and our leadership and our directors and Brian and everybody that's involved with our town. We appreciate you, and sorry we couldn't feed you lunch this go-around, but someday we'll make it up, I guess.
Doesn't mean we can't have Christmas every year or at some other point.
But we all miss that, so I think as a council, we kind of miss the time that we get to have with them and doing that, so.
I was kind of looking forward to three of them this year.
Yeah, three. We were going to try to break it up.
You know, the one thing I've learned over this time period is that celebrating, whether it's with family or employees or whatever, doesn't have to be a calendar date on the calendar. It's when that we can get together and celebrate whatever occasion it is. So I think sometimes we get so hung up about that specific date, and so hopefully, we're going to be able to do some of these things at a different time.
Also, just to continue thanking everybody that's donated in some fashion, whether it's financially or through canned good donations to our Nourish Food Bank through our drive. We had, our special guest tonight was Brayden. Brayden, thank you for coming tonight, and, you know, Brayden's, I think, two merit badges away, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
From earning his Eagle Scout. So we're proud of you, Brayden. Benjamin, great job with that young man, you and Tammy, so I want to thank you for bringing him and being involved and teaching this young man how to do it right, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate you for having me.
Yes. 2020 is almost over, thank goodness, I guess, right? So we're getting there. I do want to say to Tim and to Steve and to Raquel, it is an honor and a privilege and a pleasure to work with you three, and so glad that the town saw so fit to make it to where you guys could return and continue our work here at the town. And two years from now, we'll have some others that have to make those decisions and do that as well, but we are privileged to, quite humbled to be able to serve our town. I don't know if the public actually understands everything that we do, but there's a lot behind the scenes, there's a lot more that goes into this, and you three spoke very eloquently about the time that you have to sacrifice away from your families and for events and town events and meetings and things that we all do. So thank you all for being dedicated, and I'm looking forward to working with you guys for two more years, so. Mayor, that's all I have.
Okay, so before I move into my item for, that we have slides for, I just want to say, I think we're hearing more and more people who are getting the virus. I think we've had a lot more employees here, and I'm just asking each one of you to be safe, to practice the guidelines of the CDC. I can tell you, it's not a fun virus to have. You just don't know how bad you're going to get it. Raquel, I am so glad that you're doing better. Chief, you and Lynn, I know, so I think there's been quite a few that have been hit with it. The one thing I want to say, though, as a community, what we can do, talking about calling and praying and checking on people, when you're quarantined for 14 days, means no going to the bank, no going to the grocery store, no picking up medication, those are the things that we can do for our neighbors and for our families. And there are some people that don't have close family members that are here, or, and they may need some extra help. So just reaching out to check on those individuals, I think, is something that each one of us can step up and do when we know that a loved one or a neighbor might be sick. So I encourage you to continue to reach out. That's what's so great about this community, is we're always neighbor helping neighbor. And I think that leads into our, the slides that we have. So first off, I want to congratulate all three of our council members on their reelection, Tim, Raquel, and Steve. I'm glad you guys didn't have anyone that stepped up this year that wanted to run. I've had elections where I've had people that ran and people that didn't, and phew, those ones, when you don't have it, sure is a lot easier. So I'm glad you all were re-elected. And then next is, I hope, the Smyrna Fire Department Annual Food Drive. Chief, you guys blew it out of the water. So 59,284 items collected, and most of the time, you're able to work with local schools that have drives for you, and I know you weren't able to do that this year, is that correct?
Correct.
So they were able to do this through the support of individuals within the community, and I know Walmart is always a huge supporter in letting you set up the tent and all. How many years is this for you guys? Do you want to come up and talk a little bit? We'd love for you to, Chief. And you can talk about the firefighter that got this all started?
It was our 19th year, and we had a lot of people wanting us to do fundraisers that went to national events. I sat down with our officers and asked them, would they like, would they were interested in helping things like the Jerry Lewis telephone and things of that nature, or would you be interested in doing something for a local 501(c)(3). And they all told me they wanted to work for the Smyrna Laverne Food Bank at the time. And we started that 19 years ago, and it has grown every year. The mayor mentioned Walmart, I can't tell Mr. Wark and the associates out there how much we appreciate them for us coming out and everyone that gave. That was, it was a wild year out there. People were giving and giving and giving, and we've never experienced it like that before. So the staff, they went over and helped give out Thanksgiving dinners. I believe the Nourish Food Bank gave out 500 dinners between here and Murphysboro. So it's been busy for the firefighters, and I appreciate them doing it. I do need to thank Lieutenant Burt Wilson. He has led us on this project for the last 19 years, and, you know, telling us where to go, and I think a lot of them enjoy telling me where to go, but it's a, it's a fun event, but we know it goes to a good cause locally.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chief. You know, one of the things that we learned while we were getting ready for the food drive was that last year, 400,000 meals were served through our local food bank. This year, it's going to be over a million. That shows the need that we have within our community, and to see our citizens stepping up is something that's really important. So this year, we usually do our food drive, the other food drive that we do is usually in conjunction with the parade. Since we weren't having the parade this year, we were a little bit concerned about what would we see, what would our numbers be? And this year, our food drive collected 42,066 total items, and I hate to say this, but the winner of the Council Town Manager Challenge was Brian Hercules with 16,177 items, but we feel like the winner, Raquel, 11,243, you did great, good job, but if you will.
Was this bail-in? Was this done bail-in?
Brian, I know you're a little under the weather, but if you would come forward, please, you are, we have to congratulate our winner, so come on down.
I relinquished to Raquel.
Come on down.
I think she just wants to see me hobble.
That too.
That's only part of it.
So for those of you that didn't watch last year, we have to crown the canned good king. Oh, I forgot to change the date. I guess I need to add 2020.
That's right. We're skipping that.
Did you drop canned goods on your foot? Is that what happened? Okay, so there you go.
We don't have to really do this.
Oh, no, we do have to do this, yes.
There's your crown.
We would not want to, okay, and if you'll turn around, wait, Miss Smerna.
No.
Yes. Oh, it looks so good. Go ahead, we need to get a picture.
Head of speech.
Uh-huh.
The only reason I tolerate this embarrassment is because I know what a great cause this is. And I would tell you, it's not just the number that's up there associated with my name. A lot of people made this happen, a lot of different companies, and I think our next slide's going to talk about some of those. But I was tickled that Raquel, you know, last year, I think technically she, on her own, and it was a decision between you and I that we were doing so. I'm glad we've opened this up, and I look forward so much to being able to put this sash and this crown on your head next year. I know you're going to win. You're doing great. Thank you.
Okay, and so let's talk a little bit about the ones that we wanted to recognize individually. We have Smyrna High School, Smyrna Middle School, Rocky Fork Middle School, Grapevine Wine and Spirits, King's Crest LLC, Waldron Enterprises, SEC Incorporated, Senior Activity Center of Smyrna, Sean Collins, and Smyrna Ready Mix Concrete. So thank you for those.
There's so many people, you know, brought to the sleigh and to the truck down at the SOAC and dropped off, you know, we don't know who those were. These were some of the larger donors that made impressive donations for us, so each and every can counts. That's the most important part.
That's, well, and the true winners are the citizens, absolutely. And so together with the Smyrna Fire Department and the Town Christmas Food Drives, we collected 101,350 items to benefit the Nourish Food Bank. So thank you all, and Chief, thanks to the Fire Department for all you did, thanks to everybody on the council for all you did. Raquel, big kudos to you for stepping up and.
You weren't far behind.
There you go. And it got a little competitive there, got a little competitive, but you all, it's nice to know we live in a community in which we can help out those that might need just a little help up, so we appreciate that. So thank you. Thanks, Brian.
Mayor, is there a significance to the Beanie Wee can being in the front?
Shut up.
Absolutely. Did you not notice that's what I rotated to, to put on the front?
So his new nameplate won't say Old Town Manager anymore, it'll say King Beanie Wee.
Let's not get any ideas.
So Jeff, do we need to, are we close enough to, are we six o'clock?
Well, I'll wait till, I'll wait till six o'clock.
Okay, so can I close this meeting and then we come back at six?
I think you can do that, yes.
Okay.
Mike could do a little bit of dance for us, a little interpretive dance.
Let me ask you this, before, we've got about two and a half minutes, is there anything any director or department head would like to talk about from your department?
Is it you?
No? You've got the floor? No? Okay, then if there are, if there is nothing else, then we will adjourn this meeting, and then we will be doing another meeting at, exactly at six o'clock. Thank you. at 6 o'clock. Thank you.